If you wish to speak to any item on the agenda or during the public comment portion of the meeting, please fill out a speaker card. Each person addressing the board shall have three minutes to complete his or her comments on each agenda item for which he or she has filled out a card. The chair has the discretion to determine or alter the time limits on any agenda item. The Board of County Commissioners requests that speakers appearing under the Public Comments section of the agenda limit their comments or presentations to matters relating to county business that are within the Board's control, authority, and jurisdiction.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 County Commission Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I do, I'd like Pastor Rodney Osborne to come up and give us a prayer for tonight. Thank you, Pastor.
Let us pray. God our Father, we come this afternoon thanking you, God, for the opportunity just to stand in your presence one more time. God, we thank you for another day's journey. And oh, God, we thank you for those that have gathered here today for this meeting, God. We pray, God, that every word that is said and every decision that is made is pleasing unto your eyesight. And, God, we pray that you would bless each and every one of these leaders today of this great, great county, God of Brevard. Bless each resident of this county. Touch and bless and protect, God, each law enforcement, each first responder. And oh, God, we pray today that those that may be in the path of this storm that is coming, that you would protect them, God, in a special way. And we'll be so very careful to continue to give you the praise, the glory, and all of the honor. It is in the precious and most powerful name of Jesus Christ we do pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen. The pledge of allegiance to be led by Commissioner Felton.
Please join me in the pledge.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome once again, and we have our wonderful people tonight that will be handling a lot of this stuff. We'll try to get it done in a quick manner. Jill, do you want to start out with D1?
Actually, I'll do that, Commissioner.
Okay.
Agenda item D1 allows for the reading of the tentative aggregate operating millage rate to fund the portion of the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget that is supported by property taxes. At this time, I'd ask the Budget Office to read into the record the tentative aggregate millage rate for fiscal year 2024-2025.
The aggregate tentative millage rate for fiscal year 2024-2025 budget is 4.4390 mils. This represents no change from the aggregate rollback millage rate of 4.4390 mils, and the tentative aggregate millage rate represents a 4.3% reduction when compared to the current fiscal year 2023-2024 aggregate millage rate of 4.6383.
There is no vote required for this item, so I'll move on to Agenda Item D2. And Agenda Item D2 allows for the public to comment on the county budget for fiscal year 2024-2025. Before we begin the public comment, I'd ask the Budget Office to read into the record the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget.
The fiscal year 2024-2025 budget is $2,250,925,875. The budget represents an increase of $100,817,548, or 4.69% more than the fiscal year 2023-2024, current budget of $2,150,108,327.
We're now ready to accept public comment on the budget for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Before we do that, Mr. County Manager, I'd like to ask more of a question. Since we don't have an agreement between the county and the fire union, I guess, can we enter? What kind of discussion can we have from here? Anything or nothing?
Well, we're currently in negotiations with the union.
Right.
And it's appropriate to keep those negotiations in the proper forum where they're at now.
Okay. Pardon me? All right. So let's go ahead and move forward then. Who's going to handle this? Oh, that's the public comments there. Let's go ahead and do Michael. Michael Branson, please.
Good evening. My name is Michael Bramston. I'm the Brevard County Firefighters Union President. I do reside in Altamont Springs. We want to thank the Board for the last time they met and the staff for the direction to explore fire funding and budget and moving forward with that. We're encouraged by the details, facts, and needs that this study will identify, including lifeguards and fleet services. However, this study will take time. It was commented it would take up to a year. The budget being finalized today is insufficient to run and expand the fire rescue to meet the public's needs and expected service over the course of the year. And as we move through the process, BCFR will continue to hemorrhage experience and be impacted by failing equipment. Our most recent submissions of resignations has changed BCFR for the worse. The resignations are not people and are people who are considered to be our leaders, our mentors, our pillars of society, people who are integral part of the day-to-day Brevard County Fire Rescue. These members are not people who are on a pit stop on their way to a better place. They were Brevard. Now they're gone. It will take a very long time to get the replacements up to speed. The outside hires will be resented, but not because of who they are, but why they are here. This budget did not allow all necessary expansions of Brevard County Fire Rescue. We do appreciate the consideration of expansion, and we do want you to consider expanding the services and the budget for the services deserving of Brevard County's public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Christina Fleming?
My name is Christina Fleming. I am a resident of District 3 and a retired firefighter. I reject your proposed 24-25 budget as it does not adequately fund public safety. I'd like to address the critical budgetary needs of BCFR and why you cannot approve the budget as it is presented today. One of our District 1's fire stations has been condemned with no suitable replacement in sight, and as of date, nothing has been ordered. A temp leasing agreement is sitting in the county attorney's office for approval of two trailers on Arthur Dunn Airport property in Titusville. It should be noted that although temporary, these trailers do not have showers for your employees. Mobile showers are being considered. This unexpected lease with the airport will cost taxpayers roughly $1,800 a month. Before condemned for safety issues, Station 23 housed five employees per shift, a district lieutenant, fire medic, and two fire EMTs. Currently, one rescue is sitting behind the hold station in fifth-wheel camper. The other is being housed at Station 22 in MEMS. This results in delayed response times for 911 calls, which is both unacceptable, dangerous, and potentially leading to life-threatening situations. This station should have been replaced five years ago when the roof opened up, but its continued use can be attributed to budgetary restraints and tabled capital overlay. Currently, multiple fire engines do not have functioning air conditioning. Firefighters are being told that the backup engines are unavailable, that air conditioning repairs are either not possible due to unavailable parts or because those parts are obsolete. And they are being told it is only a requirement to have a heater. As a temporary solution, fans are being used in cabs, but this is insufficient with Florida's brutal heat index as crews lack the ability to effectively cool down after structured fires and wildland fires. This is a critical need. A new fire station in Vieira is scheduled to open on October 1st. Station 49 still has multiple unfilled positions as a result of 34 unfilled firefighter paramedic vacancies. When the doors finally open, these positions will be filled with costly overtime or less-than-qualified firefighter EMT floaters. Is the Vieira Corporation aware of the staffing shortfall? Because this is a critical need. Since January 2014, we have lost 611 field personnel or a fiscal impact of $13 million. And this does not include the gaps created from transfers to inspections or promotions to administration. This year alone, as of today, we are looking at 71 field resignations. This is a critical need and the basis for the public safety crisis that we are currently experiencing. As of yesterday's negotiations, we can expect our staffing and attrition issues to be exasperated because the current firefighter contract will expire on the 1st. The word is out in the community and around the state. Who wants to work for a fire department approaching a pay freeze? Your lead third-party negotiator was asked three months ago to petition his client for a raise effective immediately via an MOU, with hopes that the bleeding would slow. Instead, your county manager will use a frozen contract as a bargaining tactic to starve your employees with hopes that they will accept an offer that still leaves your senior firefighters and inspectors an average of 22.06% underpaid in comparison to the comparables that we constantly update to your team. It's just a shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right. That's the cards. Is any discussion from the Board? Hearing no discussion. Do I hear a motion? Do we need a motion on this?
No, we're ready to move on to the next item.
All right. Move on to D3.
Commissioner, since the Board must adopt the millages and related budgets separately, comments and motions concerning individual tax levies can also be made at the time each millage is adopted. Item D3 allows for public comment, discussion, and adoption of the final millages for fiscal year 2024-2025. If there's any public comments on item D3, now would be an appropriate time to hear those comments.
Is there any comments?
These are all D4.
Okay. We need a motion?
No, we will just move on.
Okay.
The Budget Office personnel will now read into the record the millage and related ad valorem revenue for each taxing authority. Following the reading of each tax levy, it is recommended that the Chair entertain a motion for approval of that millage.
Okay. If you bear with us, please, there's quite a few of these, and I'm going to try to get through them as soon as possible. But Jill, go ahead, please.
The Brevard County BCC operating fiscal year 2024-2025 tentative millage is 2.9207, which is a 1.95% change from the rollback millage of 2.8648, generating $197,165,000.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The Brevard County Free Public Library District fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.3306, which is a 2.16% change from the rollback millage of 0.3236, generating $22,431,234.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Goodson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The Brevard County Mosquito Control District fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.1367, which is a 2.63% change from the rollback millage of 0.1332, generating $9,275,105.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Goodson. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Fire Control MSTU.
The Fire Control MSTU fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.4929, which is a 2.73% change from the rollback millage of 0.4798, generating $15,904,626.
Motion to approve.
Is there a motion to approve? That's you? Okay, good. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
For the Recreation District 1 MSTU, the fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.4281, which is a 2.91% change from the rollback millage of 0.4160, generating $3,564,026.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to move, seconded by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The Recreation Special District Operations and Maintenance, District 4, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.5036, which is a 1.61% change from the rollback millage of 0.4956, generating $3,476,368.
Is there a motion to approve the Recreation Special District Operation?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Goodson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Next message.
For the Titusville Cocoa Airport Authority, the fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.0000, which represents no change from the rollback millage of 0.0000, generating $0.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. Let's move forward. Law Enforcement.
All right. The Law Enforcement fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.8699, which is a 2.87% change from the rollback millage of 0.8456, generating $25,720,707.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Road and Bridge Maintenance, please.
So the Road and Bridge District, sorry, Road and Bridge Maintenance, District 1 MSTU, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.4980, which is a 2.98% change from the rollback millage of 0.4836, generating $2,674,83.
Is there a motion to approve? Road and Bridge Maintenance, D1 MSTU.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Road and Bridge Maintenance, D2 MSTU.
The Road and Bridge Maintenance, District 2 MSTU, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.1687, which is a 2.68% change from the rollback millage of 0.1643, generating $1,226,881.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Goodson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobias. All, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Maintenance, D3 MSTU.
The Road and Bridge Maintenance, District 3 MSTU, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.1901, which is a 2.98% change from the rollback millage of 0.1846, generating $595,665.
Is there a motion to approve MST D4?
Make a motion.
Motion to approve. It's been by Commissioner Felton. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The Road and Bridge Maintenance, District 4 MSTU, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.2212, which is a 2.84% change from the rollback millage of 0.2151, generating $1,999,483.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Felton. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pritchett seconds. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Road and Bridge Maintenance, District 5 MSTU, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.2938, which is a 3.12% change from the rollback millage of 0.2849, generating $694,775.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is a motion to approve by Commissioner Felton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Let's move forward.
The Road and Bridge Maintenance, District 4, North Beaches MSTU, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.1866, which is a 2.98% change from the rollback millage of 0.1812, generating $181,301.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Felton makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Goodson seconds. Is there a discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The Road and Bridge Maintenance, District 4, Merritt Island South MSTU, fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.0984, which is a 2.71% change from the rollback millage of 0.0958, generating $26,269.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion by Commissioner Felton. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pritchett seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The Environmentally Endangered Lands, 2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.0467, which is a 2.64% change from the rollback millage of 0.0455, generating $3,168,598.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Felton, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The Port St. John Canaveral Groves Recreation fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.2682, which is a 2.96% change from the rollback millage of 0.2605, generating $599,350.
There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Felton, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The North Brevard Recreation Special District fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.1657, which is a 2.86% change from the rollback millage of 0.1611, generating $904,349.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Felton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The Merritt Island Recreation MSTU fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.2326, which is a 2.74% change from the rollback millage of 0.2264, generating $1,295,916.
Is there a motion to approve the Merritt Island Recreation MSTU? Motion by Commissioner Goodson, second. Seconded by Commissioner Felton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
The South Brevard Special Recreation District fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.2178, which is a 2.11% change from the rollback millage of 0.2133, generating $8,753,309.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Felton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Okay. Moving along into our voter-approved debt service millages, the Environmentally Endangered Lands voted debt 2020-24 fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.0078, generating $531,095.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. North Brevard Recreation Special District.
The North Brevard Recreation Special District voted debt fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.2034, generating $1,110,106.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Felton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The motion carries. South Brevard Recreation Special District.
I think we still need to do the Merritt Island.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's okay.
Merritt Island Recreation, is that where we're at?
Yes.
You've got to read into the record. I'm sorry.
Yes. Merritt Island Recreation voted debt fiscal year 2020-24-2025 millage is 0.0888, generating
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Felton, seconded by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. Let's move on to South Brevard Recreation Special District, I believe.
Last one. The South Brevard Recreation Special District voted debt fiscal year 2024-2025 millage is 0.0328, generating $1,323,067.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Commissioner Tobias makes a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Felton, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we finished with that stuff, Jill? We good?
Yes, we are.
All right, um.
The legislature office will read into the record the resolution establishing the county's final millages for fiscal year 2024 2025. Following the reading of the resolution, it's recommended that the chair entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
Do you want to do the discussion on lifeguards before this or after that?
That's, that's next under agenda item D four.
Okay.
It's still on D three.
On. We're still reading D three right now.
We're still doing D three. All right, uh, who's handling D three?
Um, I'll read the resolution.
Okay, please.
Um, a resolution to adopt final millages pursuant to chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt final millages for fiscal year 2024 2025 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the taxing entities identified in exhibit A which is attached here to and made part of here of by this reference, does hereby levy the millages specified in exhibit A and does hereby state the percent by which the aggregate millage to be levied is a change from the roll back aggregate millage.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, seconded by Commissioner Tobias, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
At this point, we're ready to move into agenda item D four.
Okay, you want to do the lifeguard before that?
If, if, yeah, that's your pleasure.
All right, uh, Space Coast, would you please put up the, um, slide on the options that we were talking about, please? All right, uh, before we get into this tonight, I just kind of want to share with you a couple of different things. This has been a very difficult, before I do that, I want to welcome all of our law enforcement people here and our fire people and thank you for being here tonight, so we appreciate that. It's a very delicate situation and each and every one of the commissioners has different viewpoints and I'm going to let everybody speak their minds today and I asked the participants from the city side to answer with the questions they want to ask, but let's try to keep it as civil as possible because it's very emotional. But let me tell you how we got here. We got here because about four months ago, I'm not sure of the date, but the county had a workshop and we were discussing fire and we were also discussing, uh, lifeguards and there was, um, uh, a, one of the commissioners suggested that we, uh, try to attempt to get some additional money for lifeguards from the cities. And there was lots of discussion about that and the bottom line was is that we all agreed that, okay, we could go to the cities, we send the county manager and the city attorney to the cities and if the cities agree to it, then fine, if they don't agree to it, then perhaps they'll come back with something that would be acceptable to them. I voted to allow that to go forward even though in my own mind I knew that the cities would say no. There got to be some quite tacit conversation that went on and some anger and some upset people and, uh, I understand that. I was hoping that we would have something resolved before we go to the final budget hearing. We don't. So tonight, we're going to have a discussion if, and I'm going to let every one of the commissioners talk about it after, uh, and we're going to call up the, the folks here and try to get to a resolution. I asked the county manager to draw up some options on, on potential funding methods and of course I can't talk to the other commissioners, so I don't know where they are, but, uh, I think everybody would agree that, uh, we need to resolve something this evening. I'll talk later on it, but let me just go ahead and call the, uh, the people up that would like to speak on it and, uh, Mayor Keith Capizzi. Hey, Mayor, how are you?
Sir.
If you'd pull that microphone up a little bit, buddy, I'd appreciate it. Thanks so much, Keith.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yeah, Mayor Keith Capizzi of Cocoa Beach, Surf Capital of the world. Um, I'm very excited about that, by the way. Um, look, we want, we want the beaches safe and we, we need your help to do it. You know, we, we just don't have the funding that you guys were hoping to get from us to do it, so.
Okay.
Um, I talk with my commission, I speak on behalf of my commission. Um, we saw this proposal and we decided that we were willing to, to do, um, either one, two, or four, uh, which would be basically status quo of what we've contributed in the past. We're, we're more than happy to, to help contribute, uh, for the safety of our lifeguards, our beaches with lifeguards. Um, it's just what was proposed prior was not possible in our budget. Um, just, just something to keep in mind, uh, the beaches is the county's asset. It's all of Brevard's asset. Um, and we all do pay into our property taxes for public safety, which includes the beach. I would also say that, keep in mind, Cocoa Beach is only, uh, less than 1.8% of the entire population of the county. So, you know, if we're going to pay 50% of the lifeguard bill, it, it just doesn't seem to match up. Now, like I said, we would love to continue to, to go status quo of what we've been doing. We're more than happy, happy to, uh, to contribute and we hope that you guys see that, um, anything extra I would, I would consider as double taxation on our residents since we pay county taxes for, um, safety. So, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Tobias, I know you're going to have multiple questions. Did, would you prefer to ask the mayor those questions or the city manager or just in the interest of bearing time, uh?
I, I'm, I'm good with, there are questions about the budget. The mayor mentioned it was not possible in the budget, so he may have a better handle, but either, either one. It's just questions of the budget.
If I can't, if I can't answer, I'll defer to.
Certainly.
All right, go ahead.
I did spend some time with your budget, um, just to go over some things and correct me if I'm wrong, please. Uh, you, you were 8.25% above last year's roll back rate, so a sizable tax increase. Uh, I got that from your millage resolution. Um, next year you will receive 2.932 million dollars of parking revenue for the very beaches you say. Um, but then I, I, I went to, uh, uh, page eight, uh, and it says ensure a safe city. I assume that meant beaches was one of the goals listed. So, uh, we put our, uh, I think we put our priority where we put our money. So I, I do have some questions on your budget here, one that you've already voted in favor of. On, uh, page G 16, you have $70,000 for, for storage shelves. So can you explain to me how storage shelves are more important than lifeguards, uh, when it comes to public safety?
So I wasn't part of, uh, the reason behind that, but I would assume we are having a new city hall built, so we have no storage shelves at the time. If I had to guess it, that's what it would probably be for. So, um, as you know, there's stuff that needs to be, you know, paid for.
I'm, no, I, I'm sure it is for shelves. I'm, I'm not doubting that. I'm just, my question is, how are storage shelves more important than lifeguards on your beaches?
I mean, it kind of makes sense. If you have a building that you're just being built and you have nowhere to store stuff, you would need storage shelves, so I'm not going to have the city employees store stuff on the ground.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to get to your priority was ensuring a safe city, it wasn't ensuring organized books, but we'll go to another one. Uh, G 29, you have $525,000 for a marina feasibility study. Can you explain?
Yes.
That for me and why more important, not what it is, but why it's more important than safety of, of residents on the beach?
It's not, we, we voted that down. It's not, it's not in the budget.
It's in your, it is in your budget.
Hmm, it shouldn't be. We voted that down.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask the, I'll ask the city manager, but that's in your proposed budget, uh?
We voted it down, it shouldn't be in there unless it was a mistake.
It's on your website. Uh, okay, um, you have almost $3 million, 2.9 and change here for a golf course. Less the revenue, but still it is a negative to the tune of a little over a million dollars. But you've gone a step further and you have priorities here which line item out, I thought was kind of interesting. So can you explain to me how a golf pond floating vegetative island or islands? I didn't know what that was, I had to Google that, by the way.
Those are grant funded items?
When it's in your budget, it's probably not grant funded.
Yep, grant funded, sir.
So, let me, let me explain how budgets, let me explain how budgets work. So you could have used those funds for golf funds, the less, whatever, it was 1.2, 1.1 and change is what you lost on golf courts, uh, that's general fund, to cover the lifeguards. That's what you're asking the county to do and, and so tho- those grant funds could be used to subsidize the, the, the other loss of that golf course.
I don't think so, sir. That, that, those grant funds were designated specifically for clearing out those ponds. Not, not, we couldn't get grant funds for subsidizing, uh, lifeguards or we would do that.
Let me, uh, here's, here's how this works. We, we had golf courses, Brevard County had three or four of them, we got rid of them because they cost us money and they're costing the city money and you say you can't do it. So my question is, is that, that is part of the 1.2 loss. How in the world do you justify, uh, running golf courses when you don't have safe beaches?
It, it's very unfortunate that we do have an asset that loses money.
It's not an asset if it loses money. An asset is something that's generally.
I see where you're going, but it's very unfortunate that it loses money and we're trying to figure out ways to mitigate that. Um, you know, everybody has bad years and, and loses money and that doesn't mean you just shut down your business. That means you got to try to do what you can to make it work.
You don't need to tell me that this, this board made the decision to get rid of our golf courses. It made lots of residents, they weren't very happy with that, in all honesty, but it wasn't fair because we public, uh, we prioritize public safety so we could afford lifeguards on our beaches. Finally, help, help me with this last bit. This is the thing that was most confusing to me. Um, you employ 21 lifeguards right now, is that, is that correct?
I, I'm not sure of the exact amount, so.
I, I, there's 21 lifeguards on your budget right now, on your, on your pool, yes, on your pool. So can you explain to me the difference between the safety of your residents at the pool versus the safety of your residents at the beach?
They're all equally, um, should be for safety. I don't, I don't care what it is, a life on the beach, a life on the land, a life on the pool.
I, I, no, I agree with you.
It should all be funded.
I agree. So my question is though, why do you fund one and choose not to fund another?
Well, the pool is our personal asset.
Excuse me, I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm speaking with the mayor here.
I'll handle it, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have Keith from.
Nobody needs to talk from the, the, uh, audience at this particular point in time. We'll, we'll get to those questions in a minute, so I apologize, Keith, go ahead, please, if you'd be so kind, Mayor.
The pool is the Cocoa Beach city asset. The, the beach is a, is a county asset.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, or I'd like to ask the county attorney a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, Morris, do, do we own the beach?
We do not.
Is it, is it a state beach?
It is.
And the, the parks that are attached to those beaches that are in discussion, are those county beaches or, or county parks, I apologize?
So, um, we have a number of lifeguard towers at county owned and maintained parks and then there are a number at city owned and maintained parks. And I believe in Cocoa Beach, there's a mixture. I think Lori Wilson is county owned and maintained, although I think that's technically in Cocoa Beach, but there are other ones that are, uh, at municipal facilities in Cocoa Beach.
Okay, so, and, and we have in this fiscal year 25 budget, we have fully funded the lifeguards at the Lori Wilson, Lori Wilson Park.
Yes, yes.
So, so, uh, just to be clear, the beach is not county property and the parks that are attached to the beaches that is not county property, uh, is also not county property. So it is not a county asset as you just described. You, you want the county to pay for it, but it is a state, as our county attorney just said, it is a state beach, I'm sorry, I'm having to do these things, uh, attached to a city park, just to be very clear.
Uh, personal residences are not county assets. Um, waterways are not county assets. They're all part of your public safety requirement to take care of. So it doesn't matter whether our beach is Cocoa Beach or whatever, you guys, we pay for public safety and that lifeguard has included that according, uh, according to your ordinances.
You just said, I'm sorry, you just said that the, the beaches were county and I just established that they in fact were not county. So that, that was, that was it, I, I just wanted to be very clear.
I'm establishing we pay for public safety and that includes everything.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett, do you have something?
Yes, sir, I just, you, I just trying to get numbers, I should have asked this before I got here. Historically, what were you guys paying towards this?
We paid 83,000 before.
83,000 before and you're, um, you're willing to go right back to that again, correct? Is that what you said?
We were willing to go even higher, which was the, which was the next, um, um, like the market adjust, whatever you guys call it.
Okay.
Uh, to, it was like 86,000.
Okay. What was it that was before that, that, before we start trying to work on other funds? What was the amount that we were asking for Cocoa Beach?
I think it was like 700 and something thousand.
Just for Cocoa Beach?
Just for Cocoa Beach, yeah.
Was it, okay.
Yeah, they, they had multiple full-time towers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's a, you know, that's a thousand percent increase almost, I, I just, you can't do that.
Right now, there are several, um, seasonal towers in Cocoa Beach and several full-time. Historically, they paid a little over 20% for the seasonal, but weren't paying any, anything towards the full-time. So with the board direction to go to 50% on both seasonal and full-time, that did result in a substantial proposed increase.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Felton, do you have questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, Commissioner Goodson?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Question, what made you change your mind? Because you were adamant the last time that you weren't paying a penny.
Well, I want to work with you guys and I told you before when we met, I wanted to figure out a way that we can work together. Um, you know, we, we, we want to be a team player and we, we don't mind doing what we were doing in the past, the status quo, so, you know, you know, we're here for safety and we're here to try to make it work, so.
And, um, option five you don't like?
We just, we still, we can't do it. We, we can, and right now, we don't have the other options in our budget, but I've talked with the commission and we've all agreed that we would be able to talk with the city about doing a, a resolution, uh, to fit the, what we were paying in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, you have another question, Commissioner?
Commissioner Goodson, Commissioner Goodson, in this option five, I'm sorry, I'm putting you on the spot, we might have to ask someone, do you know what the, um, amount for Cocoa Beach would have been in option five, sir?
I'd have to resort frank on that.
525,000.
No, there's three cities involved in that.
Right.
Right, right. Uh, I don't have the exact number, but it's, it's somewhere between 300 and 400,000, I would believe.
Yeah, about 350,000 or so.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, any more questions? Uh, Wayne, you want to come on up? Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, and just, I want to just include too, I, I have spoke with all the other coastal community, uh, mayors and they also send their, um, their condolences or not condolences, uh, support.
Good evening, Wayne.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Wayne Carragino, City Manager, Cocoa Beach. I just want to, I think Keith was spot on. Um, we're in full support of option one, two, or four. We, we just want clean beaches. We just want safe beaches. That's all we want. We contribute, um, I don't want to get into the weeds we just did, but, um, it's pretty simple. We participate, we, we were perfectly happy with the way it was. The status quo before was, um, we felt fair deal for us and, um, it was working. You know, it was a team effort like Keith said and, uh, and it was working. So, um, our commission was in full support of coming here to, in front of you guys and, um, requesting that we select one of those options. And that's it, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne.
Hang on, hang on.
I'm, I'm, I'm just getting to you. I'm sorry, I apologize.
I wanted to walk away.
Okay, Commissioner Goodson?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tell me, when will your parking garage be totally paid off?
Is that a 20-year note on that?
I think it happened right on the sunset of 2036.
2036, the sunset of 20, that's our CFO.
Yeah, does, um, all the revenue from parking go to pay for the parking garage?
That's correct. It is, it is committed funds.
Okay.
Come on, can she come up? She's our CFO. Absolutely, come on up.
Patricia DeKuyt is our CFO.
Okay. So, and right now, your revenue in, in parking, all parking on the beach is 2.9. Is that what you said, Commissioner Tamia?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Slightly over 3 million. They've, uh, projected a slight, I don't know why, but a slight downturn to 2.9 in this fiscal year's budget.
Yep. So the parking garage is CRA and that is committed to the CRA debt. It is not available for other uses. And to your point, yes, our parking revenue is going down and we expect that trend to continue into 2025. We had a, we had a bit of an increase following COVID and the return to people being able to go outside. That has not been sustained and will not be sustained as far as we can judge. We have a budget of close to 14 million for our police and fire. We have completed our negotiations. Those negotiations do include increases to the salaries of our police and fire and that is for the intent to have retention. We are still not at market and we are still at, not at optimal levels for our, particularly for our fire. Our fire department does track the type of calls, whether they are to residential versus to non-residential. Approximately 46% of our calls in our fire do not go to servicing the residents, but go to servicing our visitors. If you extrapolate, our parking doesn't even come close to covering the cost of public safety for our tourists and visitors. It's a real problem for a city that has a population just over 11,000. It's a heavy burden. It isn't that we don't want to help with the, uh, the safety of our beaches. It isn't that we don't want to help with the cost of the lifeguards. It's we are struggling under the burden of public safety in the whole for our visitors that come to our, our city. It is a heavy burden for our taxpayers. We are trying, our commissioners are trying very hard to keep our mileage rate at the current level. Yes, it's an 8.25% increase and that's because there's been redevelopment. Our commissioner are trying to get redevelopment to help build that tax base, to try to ease that burden. But as you guys know, sitting up there, we're all facing the challenges of just supply chain and the costs and they're going up. And it is a, it is a really hard challenge for all of us in this public sector to try to meet the demands and the needs. Yes, we can close our golf course. It is an option and it is not an option that we are not looking at. We do look at that and it may end up being the result. But we are looking at everything and we are trying to make it work, but we can't, we just can't. We, we are, we are using reserves this year to balance the budget and that's to try to make some of these capital improvements, um, happen. We're looking for grant monies, but it isn't going to be sustainable. It just isn't.
Okay.
That's why she's our CFO.
Well, she's very brilliant and very smart, so thank you for that. Any questions? Any more questions? Pardon me, Commissioner? Pardon me? Go ahead, go ahead. The floor's open, guys.
Sorry. How much is your new, uh, complex, your new complex costing?
11.5 million.
Okay. And you also mentioned that the parking lot was part of the CRA?
The parking garage.
Sorry, the parking garage was part of the CRA.
Yes.
So help me here, what percentage of that parking garage did county taxpayers facilitate?
So the CRA, um, does receive the.
TIF funding?
Yeah.
What percentage?
Off the top of my head, I don't recall the percentage and I'm so sorry. For this year, there's about a million going into the CRA budget for the TIF from the city. And it's, I think roughly 400 or 500 from the county.
Okay, so.
But those numbers aren't exact.
Yeah, so, and I appreciate that. I just wanted, and I know the board knows this, but that money that went into the parking structure that you're getting 20 or 15, or I don't know, I don't park there.
Parking revenue pays for the parking debt and that is per the debt agreement.
Yes, but, uh, 40, roughly 40% of that parking structure was paid for out of TIF funding, county TIF funding.
No, all of the debt is being paid for by the parking revenue.
Sorry. The, 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 the bond that went out to pay for that parking structure came out of CRA, correct?
CRA, yes.
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 And the CRA receives TIF funding from the county.
But the TIF funding is not going towards paying the debt.
I get it, I get it. But the initial construction and all that good stuff of the, of the.
Was paid by the debt. It was debt financed.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have a question, Commissioner Feldmayer?
Just to clarify his point, what does the TIF funding, uh, support?
So it supports the redevelopment of the downtown area, which was blighted when we started the CRA program or agency. And so we provide grants to local businesses. We've been talking about, um, providing grants to some of the homeowners in that area to, if they've had, um, negative impact due to whatever conditions. We've got, um, a grant program established to use that, at least until it is sunsetted. So it's based on grant applications from the local businesses and potentially to, uh, with our last commission meeting, one of our commissioners brought up doing some low-income housing as well and using it for that purpose, which the CRA does allow.
Commissioner Pritchett, go ahead.
Just a question. I know it's too late in your budget time period to do this, but I gotta throw it out. Would it be possible for you guys to add $1 to each car parked and maybe allow that to help in the future of, of helping to allocate some of this cost? Is that available with CRA funding to do that?
Well, not, not through the CRA because we're limited on how we can use CRA funding.
Right, I, I do, I do know that, but you could, you could maybe make some changes in your CRA plan too, if you wanted to.
We've talked about increases to the parking program as, as a whole to try to offset some of these costs. But I think that we've reached, you, you can go so far and then you start to actually lose revenue because you lose people willing to pay that price. So I think we're at the maximum level that we can set our parking at this time without having it just drop off in usage, um, where we won't really get a benefit from the price increase. So we're going to have to find other options.
Something you're like, would like look at?
It's not that we're not willing.
Okay.
It's just that we don't think that we'll, we'll receive the benefit that we're hoping for. We think that the revenues will.
Because they're kind of your trust.
The usage will go down and the revenue will stay neutral, is what we're finding.
Kind of hoping that be thought later. So I got one quick question for you, City Manager. You knew this was coming. So, um, last time we were, we, you, you guys had agreed you were going to pay that amount of 82. Are you willing to catch that back up for us on a past promise that y'all didn't do?
The one we didn't pay?
For 2024?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Let's go on to the next card. Karen. Normally, when somebody calls your name, you come up with a guitar and start singing a beautiful song. Welcome, Commissioners. Nice to see you.
I just wanted to come and speak as in support of our mayor and our city manager and our CFO. We did have this discussion in our last meeting where we, we're all agreed to option one, two, or four. And I just want to say, I've been, um, being on the commission now for eight years, this is some of the same, an example of some of the same things we've been dealing with for eight, for the time I've been on the commission, is our public safety is staffed for only over 11,000 residents, yet we have to accommodate over 3 million tourists a year. So we are constantly being taxed with calls, our public safety with calls for all these people. So we've tried to find creative ways, um, even before I was a commissioner, to try to deal with this staffing for our public safety, but also for paying for it too. And, um, it goes back to the issue too. I'm sure you all know that with generating a bulk of the sales tax for the county base and it being redistributed based on our population, we have one of the smallest populations in, in the county, so that's a challenge for us. So, um, this is something I've been dealing with as a commissioner for the past eight years. With your continued support, uh, we really appreciate, I mean, we want to work as a team with you guys. So going back to these options would help us to continue to do that. As the CFO, CFO explained, um, we, we just couldn't do what you guys were asking before for the 700,000. It's not, we don't want to contribute. It's just, we couldn't do that much. We appreciate the skills and the know-how of your lifeguard staff and, uh, we were working well with them before. So I just wanted to support my fellow commissioner and city manager and, um, ask for option one, two, or four. And I think that's fair and just continue our relationship, working as a team to provide safer and cleaner beaches for our residents in the city and in the county and our, our tourists that come from all over the world. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody have any questions of Karen? All right. Mayor Dennington, Allison, how are you? Nice to see you again. Allison is the mayor of Melbourne Beach.
If this is tall enough. Hi, thank you, Allison Dennington, Melbourne Beach Mayor. First, I want to say thank you. I know this is a lot harder job than anyone realizes and there's a lot of different things that you have to bal, you know, balance and you have to be fiscally responsible and I appreciate that. I'm reading from your website, the beach management program. Healthy beaches are essential to Brevard's tourist-based economy, which is true, but I would say that safe beaches and lifeguards are equally essential to the tourist-based economy of this wonderful, great state. We are a little bit different because we're small. We're not like Cocoa Beach. We do have a little bit of, um, beach parking, paid parking. The revenue from it has been steadily going down and, you know, um, the history is that over the last 20 or so years is that cities and towns, our revenue sources have been steadily chipped away. So we have fewer and fewer means of revenue. But our liability and all of our responsibilities and costs have stayed the same and gone up and it's especially bad for small towns like us. You know, we are almost fully built out, so we don't have, and we only have a few commercial areas and we have a ton of people that drive through on our roads and streets. You know, we, we have a, we have a base in one area that has been a problem for 20 years. It's an interior street and we don't have the money to fix it. So safety is important, but the truth is, you know, and this is going to sound heartless, but tourists drowned. Our residents don't drown. The statistics and history bear that out. We want to have safe beaches, but our residents, they want their tax money to go to fixing their roads so they don't have to wear boots for a month to walk out and get their, their mail. You know, and so that those roads that they drive on every day, the taxes that they pay for goes to fixing those roads because they're paying county taxes and town taxes. We just, in our budget, they requested two more police officers. We have one, but you know, we raised our salary and we're still one of the lowest salary, um, for our police officers in the county. But when you add the salary plus all of the taxes and expenses, I mean, it's, you know, I don't know the exact number, but $80,000. Well, that's basically all of that revenue from our little beach parking area. So, you know, unfortunately, I think if our residents have to choose between paying any money at all, um, they, they, they very well made choose not to pay any money because, you know, our, our parents, they watch their kids, they, they know about riptides. It's the tourists. This is a tourist issue, so thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
And my manager is here, so, and I have our budget. If you have any specific questions.
Elizabeth, are you here?
Yeah, she is.
Oh, there you are.
So she's going to be the one that knows all the numbers really well.
Commissioner Tamia first or Commissioner Pritchett?
I'm going to ask the budget, so you're going to have to have the manager up. I just want to ask the question I asked.
All right, Elizabeth, could you come up, please?
Come on up. You have budget.
Elizabeth's the city manager of Melbourne Beach, so that's the person to ask.
I brought it.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. If you'd stand up here too, just in case the Commissioner has another question. Go ahead.
Ms. Elizabeth, real quick, I, same question I asked them. What, what was y'all's input before we started talking about changes? Do you know the money amount?
It was pretty substantial for us. We had, we had a part-time lifeguard.
Do you know the dollar amount though? I'm just.
I don't. You had gone to a full-time and a part-time, which we never considered a full-time guard for our beaches.
Do we have the amount that Melbourne paid for their portion?
I thought it was like 60,000 and it was going to go to 138 was what I recalled, which.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
If Cocoa was 80,000 and we were 60,000, I mean, that's.
So they said, I think they, they had mentioned that you guys are willing to go back to the historical cost?
For me personally, and I'm just one vote, um, I, I would be, I, my position would be if the county doesn't pay, we, we're happy not having lifeguards at all.
Okay, so that will renege my next question. If you're willing to pay the part that y'all didn't pay in during that time period, when you made us the promise you would pay it that you didn't pay?
I didn't make any promises and we, we, we had a lot.
I think the city did.
We have residents on both sides of this issue, but right, you know.
I know, I think the city had made a commitment to that though and you guys didn't pay that in. Would you be willing to pay that back?
We paid in this year.
You did pay in?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That question's all gone then, thank you.
For the, I thought we voted not to.
All right, so. Yes, go ahead.
If I got it right, it was Cocoa Beach this year that did not pay.
Correct.
The other cities did.
Correct.
Yeah, I just, you know, money doesn't grow on trees and hard choices are required and, and it's not, you know. Thank you.
I mean, John, did you have something?
I, I did, um, and I appreciate your honesty. You know, it was different than what we've heard in the past. I think the board up here, I mean, we, we just heard that the mayor said they don't need them, they don't service. And it really takes, I appreciate what you did. I'm looking at you, you had a tax increase of 4.6% this year.
I voted against that, but it passed with the other votes.
Listen, it happens to me all the time. But I did have one question. You have a $50,000, which is substantial for a, 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 a budget of your size, a $50,000 rental, vacation rental tracking, uh, software contract. Can you explain, and I, oh, the best I could find was revenue through fines was $6,000 on that, on your budget. Can you explain?
Yeah, and I'd be happy, oh, I, I know all about, I'd be very happy to talk about this. In the past, we've had one code enforcement officer of 20 hours and we also only had one building official and we had no breaks. So he essentially could never take vacation, you know. The code enforcement officer is just, it's not enough time for him to, um, be able to go out and get the evidence and do all of the things that are required to bring a code enforcement case for a short, an unregistered short-term rental. We have like 20 or so, but we have about 40 unregistered short-term rentals. But the costs associated with, with gathering, just the data, doing all of the stuff that you need to do, it's, it's insurmountable for one code enforcement officer of 20 hours. There are, there are software that you can purchase that does a ton of the work, so you can bring these cases faster. Our, um, our priority, because of our residents, are to really go after these unregistered rentals, get them registered. That would be a revenue source. And, and to do that, we have to actually enforce these unregistered rentals. That software will allow us to do those very quickly and to actually bring cases.
So, so let me understand, I appreciate your honesty. So you said there's, it's hard, about 40 unregistered. So you spend $50,000 a year for 40 unregistered?
Well, actually, if you look at the AirDNA data, um, which is a, a report that comes out every year, it says, and actually, if you look at the data on hotel use, over time, historically, people staying in hotels is going down and people staying in Airbnbs is going up. And you want to know where the vast majority of people want to stay. They don't want to stay in Orlando or in big cities. They want to stay in small residential houses and communities. The statistics are that places like Melbourne Beach are going to increase, you know, tenfold. We don't want to turn into Jacksonville Beach where, you know, they have 350, um, you know, plus, you know, Airbnbs and they're losing longtime residents. Or up in the Panhandle where they have 1,200 residents and they have 1,200 houses that are Airbnbs. So, yes, we want to take this seriously. If you look at the, there, there are ratings of places that are great for Airbnbs for investors and, and Melbourne Beach is ranked like 99%. They are coming. So the numbers of what we have doesn't reflect what we are going to have. And we want to do everything we can to make sure that at least those places are registered. You know, honestly, I would love for the state to have some tax for everyone, for the counties and all the municipalities on these Airbnbs because.
I, I appreciate you, you answered it. There are 40, but you're trying to prevent other ones coming in. It was just a sizable amount of your budget, $50,000.
And I think it is like a capital, yeah.
From some of the commissioners.
I think it's a capital cost associated with the original software.
Mayor, thank you for that. I have other commissioners that want to ask you a couple of questions, please. Thank you. Commissioner?
I don't have a question, but during that discussion, I mean, those $1,250, um, that you paid for that software for each one of the Airbnbs, um, I find that interesting because we talked up here about, uh, software similar to that. And I, I think that would be, uh, pretty expensive for the county to, to pay, um, something like that. Do you, do you think that that's, is that something that you're going to do next year? I'm just curious.
So the manager knows about, she priced the software. There may be less expensive options. I think it was, it was a, what happened was it wasn't in the original budget at all and because of some meetings that we had and citizens that came, there were adjustments and she did get a little bit of information and put that in there, whether we use all of that.
Let me ask Elizabeth a question real fast. What's been the rate of return for your $50,000 investment? How many taxes, how much taxes have you gained back?
So far, zero. We've, we've not implemented the program.
Okay, well, I would suggest you get rid of your software.
We haven't purchased it yet.
Okay. All right, any more questions for Melbourne Beach? If not, we've got other things. things we got to do here. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. City manager Casey, come on up. Indy Atlantic. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Talking about lifeguards, I understand the importance of them. My background, I come from public safety. I was in the police force for over 30 years, and I've worked in Indy Atlantic for 35 years almost, and I've seen drownings before, and back in 2007, when we had those drownings and stuff. But most of our residents, we're already paying county taxes, I'm not going to get into far into that, we pay the same taxes, somebody incorporated. We also, our residents aren't going to the beaches where the lifeguards are. They're going to the more quiet beaches where aren't to lifeguards, and they know from swimming and stuff like that. Our drownings, historically, are people that do not live in Indy Atlantic. They might come from other areas of Brevard County. We've had a few of those, but a lot of tourists. And with the tourist tax dollars and advertising, come to the Indy Atlantic or come to the beaches in Brevard County, we're advertising on billboards that, come there, the beaches are safe. Well, I think it's important for our tourists to keep it safe, but it's just a burden on our taxpayers. We have 3,000 residents, and we do charge for parking, and our parking money stays all the way down there. We have two enterprise funds where the parks are and the other stuff, so that money funds that area only. So it's not going into any funds for the general fund of supporting, you know, paving roadways and things like that. So I think it's, and we're acceptable for one, two, and four. I've talked to my council and stuff.
Okay.
We did pay our portion this year already.
Yes, you did. Thank you. Any questions of Commissioner, Commissioner Pritchett, you have a question?
Same question. I'm guessing if the other two picked up that chunk of change, your amount's been very small so far to us, right?
Yeah, we paid about $41,000 this year, I believe.
$41,000?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir, go ahead.
A couple of quick questions.
Please.
Mayor, can you explain, we've heard that Cocoa Beach is seeing a decrease in revenue, yet you're estimating a little over a 20% increase in parking revenue. Can you explain that?
Are you talking about the current budget?
Fiscal '23, '24, you have 747. Fiscal year '24, '25, you have 907,450, roughly a 20% increase.
So we've seen, it depends which item, I don't have the '24, '25, but, so we have seen it this year, a decrease in parking amounts, and we've raised the rates.
Okay, that's a good answer. You've just raised the rates. You may not have as many cars.
But we're getting to the point where we can't raise them and stuff. We've raised the rates. That's why you saw that increase, to keep up with the cost down there of the infrastructure and things. For example, the bathrooms in Nance Park need to be replaced. That's a half million dollars. We don't bring a half million dollars in Nance Park funds per year.
I got it. Okay. Does the same thing happen with taxes? I see this year you have a 7.23% tax increase. Will there be some level of, I'm asking for my brother here who lives in Indy Atlantic, will there be some time where you don't raise taxes, where it hits that level where you just can't do it anymore?
Yes, there's times we look at taxes, and the council looks at it, but, you know, we've had the increase of costs, wages, and everything else, and, you know, again, we're another police and fire, giving them raises and stuff, and other employees keeping up with things. We're one of the lowest paid in the county and trying to keep us eligible.
One last question here. On page 29 of this year's budget, you have $370,000 for the Fifth Avenue landscaping. Is that more important than, to your residents, I don't know, than lifeguard, safety on the beaches?
Well, right now, that $370,000, it's been going on since 2017 with the FDOT working back and forth, and amounts raised. Council, we're at the bid right now. They weren't happy with the first number. We rejected the first bid because it came in way over that amount, and we may not do it, depending on what the bids come in, because we don't see it being that cost.
I'm sorry, you voted, this is the, you voted on this budget, did you?
It's in the budget, yes, sir.
Okay. You're 370. So it was higher, so, but I, so, I'm sorry, I'm just shocked. It was higher than 370, and you got it down to 370, and that's a good thing?
No. Originally, it was in a 200 range, and it came in at almost $500,000.
Okay.
We've rebid hoping to lower those bids, and I'm hoping to get closer to the 200,000, but we had money in reserves that we did use for that. It's not money that keeps coming about, so this money we've saved over the years for the project, and I increased it a little bit, and just in case we come above, and it'll be up to council, and they don't really want to go above that original number.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mike? Hearing none. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you in a minute. Aneeshi Cobb?
Angela.
Angela.
Hello.
Hi. Angela Cobb, Cocoa Beach. I am not a commissioner. I'm just a business owner there. I've been doing beach rentals for 15 years in Brevard County. I started in Indy Atlantic, and now I currently do them in Cocoa Beach. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I'm also here for some of the lifeguards that couldn't be here, but who pays for all?
We're not going, we can't answer your questions, okay? You can give us your public comment, but we're not going to be able to answer your questions.
Oh, okay. So all the billboards along 95, I'm guessing, are paid by Brevard County?
We can't answer your questions.
So I see them all the way up to Georgia, advertising to come to Cocoa Beach. I believe that the reason we have so many visitors there are because of a lot of advertising to come there. The beach that I work at is extremely busy. We have four current lifeguard stands in Cocoa Beach, which I don't even think is enough. I have seen more tragedies since I have done beach rentals than anybody can probably imagine. I've had to pull out bodies myself, and I'm not even a lifeguard. I just think that the reason we have so many drownings are because of the advertising to come to Cocoa Beach. It's not our residents that are drowning. These are, every single person that I've seen pulled out of that ocean is a visitor, and a lot of those visitors aren't even spending money in Cocoa Beach. They come in from the cruise lines, and they spend one day at the beach and leave, and then they have this tragedy happen. A lot of people that I talk to, because I talk to every single customer, where are you from, why are you here, they say, oh, we just have, you know, a flight in from Orlando. We decided to drive out to the beach. They're not staying at hotels there. They're not spending money at even the restaurants. They bring their own coolers a lot of times, and they hang out at the beach, and sometimes they drown. And a lot of times, it's not, has anything to do with anybody in Cocoa Beach. Our tax money isn't going towards, I mean, it's going towards us and what we do at Cocoa Beach, but these are people that don't live there, and they're not spending money there. And I just wanted to make a point about the parking garage, too. I go to work every morning, and so I see who parks in the parking garage, and the first two floors are usually taken up by residents who don't have to pay for parking. So that's probably why we're not making a lot of money on the parking garage, too. So, but I think that we should stick with, like, option one, two, or four. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you have a question? No questions. Commissioner Pritchett, would you take the chair, please?
Certainly will, sir.
Thank you very much. Well, as each of you probably know, I'm the guy that called this whole question to a head, and I want to share with you why. First of all, we have a 60% decrease in budget for lifeguards. A 60% decrease in budget for lifeguards. First of all, Cocoa Beach and this beach area is the number-one surfing beach in the entire East Coast of the United States. That's incredible. Number two, added to that, we're the fifth-most dangerous beach in the United States of America. Why? Over 300 people pulled from the ocean last year, 14 drownings, but we also have tremendous amounts of shark bites. Now, we have a TDC that is being funded by a tourist tax, and I can assure you, with the fifth-most dangerous place in the United States for a beach, that if we have one, or two, or three, or four more drownings next year, I can tell you right now, that tourist tax is going to plummet. There's already been articles out here, beaches not to go to, and it's already out. And I can assure you, that will absolutely ruin what we're doing as far as tourism goes. I'm not here tonight to pick on your budgets. How you spend your money, I think, is your, you know, what you need to do. Now, I understand Commissioner Tobias' thing on, well, you should be able to afford it, and here's why, and I appreciate that. But what I appreciate more than anything is, is that we do the most important thing for the general public, and that is safety on the beach. This budget only included unincorporated areas. And I don't care what anybody says in this room, unincorporated areas are being paid for by county taxes, fully. Why in the world would cities not be afforded the same luxury, because they pay county taxes also? And the reason the beaches are so overwhelmed with invasion from the general public and from the visitors is very simple. We're driving all of them to the beach. So is that the city's responsibility, that all these tourists are coming there and messing up their beach, and they've got to have more beach control, they've got to have more garbage pickup, they have to have more safety? Or is it a responsibility of the TDC, the county, and potentially some of the seasonal lifeguard monies that the cities give? I'm flabbergasted that we're at this point right now. Last year, when I first came on to commission, Commissioner Pritchett was the chairperson, and the first thing we did is, is that we had TDC come in and fund some of the money. Now, we've fully vetted through our attorney that TDC or TDT, Tourist Development Taxes, are usable for lifeguards. In the past, interestingly enough, let me just kind of share with you what's happened over the last few years. In 2023, there was a total of 119 people staffed during the season, everything else. We had a $3,143,000 budget. Cocoa Beach gave us $83,000. Indy Atlantic gave us $41,000. Melbourne Beach gave us $20,000. Now, the next, the very next year, in 2024, still 119 people, full-time 29, seasonal 90, out of the general fund, the county general fund, came $2,881,000, and out of TDC, $934,654. They need to participate in this funding. They absolutely do. They're the ones that are having the invasion comes to the beaches. And I don't want to sit here, I'm leaving the commission here at the end of my turn. I don't want to be responsible for having people point at me when I go at Publix and say, why didn't you do something about lifeguards on our beach? Why didn't you protect the general public? And tonight, I'm here to tell you that I've met with every one of these city managers, every one of these city people. I went through all the budgets with them, and then I figured out when I was going through the budgets, me going through their budgets is none of my business. None of my business. What is my business is, is whose responsibility is for all these people coming and invading our beaches and being tourists? Now, I like tourism, and I want it to stay, but I guarantee you, with a budget like this, with what we have right now, a couple more drownings, a couple more shark bites, we need those lifeguards on the beach to pull the people out of the ocean. We need those lifeguards on the beach to start blowing whistles when the sharks are out, and we need to protect the general public. So I'm begging, I'm begging, of all the things, all the votes that we've taken, since I first got on the board, I'm begging this county commission to vote with me tonight, and I would like to make a motion to accept option one as a potential funding source for the lifeguard issue.
Mr. Tobias?
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Option one has roughly 1.9 million for tourism.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain where, what funds those 1.95 million will come from?
Absolutely.
And then to see if, as you said, is the chair of the TDC, has the TDC given their opinion on how, whether or not that this is a wise investment or not? Those are the two questions.
The TDC has not given their opinion on it, and the TDC has got some conflicts of interest in regards to this, because where the TDC money would come from, as far as I'm concerned, would be the general marketing fund. Now, I've talked to Mr. Krannis in regards to this. There are several other places where the money can come from. The only place I don't want it to come from is what we just funded, which was Brevard Cultural Arts and the sports thing, so that's off the board as far as I'm concerned, but Peter, Peter, hello, Peter Krannis, birth to Peter. Need to make sure that you, I'm doing the right thing here in telling these folks that the money is available.
I have the answer to those questions, Commissioner, if you want to know where the funding's coming from.
Yes, sir, please go ahead, then.
There is, in the cultural fund, after what the board did and the votes that you did last week, there's currently $550,000 that is not allocated. In the capital fund, there is $710,000, and the marketing fund has approximately 1.9 million that is available above the 40% threshold that we have to maintain in marketing.
Now, the marketing budget itself is $13 million, is it not, Peter?
Roughly. Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm not so sure we can't take some money from the marketing budget itself.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
I'm asking Peter. Is that a possibility, Peter?
I would look to maybe Morris to answer that, as far as what's available, what's able to be used. It is available in there, but...
I know there are thresholds below which you cannot go, as far as the, expending marketing funds on marketing dollars, and that 40% is one of those, but I don't know how that correlates to your numbers, Peter.
There is above the 40%. There is $1.1,955,000 available in that marketing fund.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Who's chair now? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Pritchett was. She handed it back to me, but I'm standing here with a motion that I put on the floor, which has not been seconded, and I was just-
Not dead, though.
Not dead yet, I don't think, and I hope, I hope it's not ever going to be dead, but there might be another option. It might be better for everybody.
You mentioned that there were some conflict issues with the TDC.
Well, the hoteliers aren't going to like not spending money on trying to get them to their hotels. That's the conflict.
Isn't inherently, though, there always that conflict?
Absolutely.
So my question then is, why would we accept their advice certain times and not others? For instance, you know, we accepted their advice for a lighthouse, right? Just last meeting.
Yep.
And then, so I'm not doubting the conflict. I'm just trying to understand why we accept it certain times and not others.
That's called politics. That's all I can tell you. And they are recommending board to this county commission, and this county commission's the final authority. So if we don't like what they have to say, we can do it, and we've done it a bunch of times.
So my question is, and I see they're recommending, and didn't you just mention a couple minutes ago, they haven't made a recommendation one way or another on this one?
No, and candidly, I don't know that it's necessary.
The recommending body, you just said, though, right? And don't you say his chair is that one?
Well, they are, and that's a question that I can ask Morris. Morris, I mean, if we want to do this, do we need to bring it back through and walk it through the TDC? I mean, because in the event that we want to do this, and the TDC says no, it's going to come right back here, and this is too big of an important project, that I think that if this board says, we need to protect the general public, then we need to protect the general public. If you need to go back through the parade of, okay, let's go through the committees and all that stuff, that's fine, but even if they say no, it comes back here final, and we're the final authority.
I-
That part is correct.
Pardon me, sir?
That is correct. There are some things you do need a recommendation from the TDC in order to accomplish by statute. This isn't one where that's a hard-wired requirement to have that recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I will have, while I can't support this motion, I will have a motion here that I think dovetails, will get us there, but won't require us to dip into that marketing dollars, but will get us to the $3.7 million. I have a difference of opinion on where those dollars should come from.
Sure, I understand.
But I can get us there, but you have the motion on the floor, so just to let you know, I will have something else.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Hold your motion for a little while, sir, just so we can hear it?
Oh, absolutely. And let me tell you that I would be more than happy to hear it, as long as it kept the city's monies at 151,000.
If you would hold that right now.
I'm holding it right now. I'm holding it. Go ahead.
Mine dovetails off option five. If you look at option five, I had another one, this is the watered-down version of mine that gets us to the $3.7 million. The county on option five actually decreases from 1.9 to 1.3. I think that's unfair. So I would slide that $600,000 over there to option five.
You got me confused now, because I'm not reading that in option five.
He's saying increase the, you're saying increase the county...
Oh, okay, got it, I'm sorry, thank you.
That 600,000, that roughly $600,000 savings would come from, would then be expended on tourism. That would leave a tourism amount of $1,275,562. Coincidentally, we have roughly that amount, give or take, $5,000 or $10,000 in the cultural, and to be very clear, this is outside of the cultural money that we just spent.
Leftovers.
Okay? In the capital.
Leftovers.
That is leftover, we just wasted a whole bunch of money on a lighthouse. Okay, so this, that no one's going to go to, mind you. And I lied to you, sorry, not a lighthouse, two extra lighthouse keeper cottages, whatever. So that savings would come out of there, there would be no marketing loss. So that would get us to the $3.7 million. Again, the county general fund would be the full 1.941 million. The tourism would be the 1,871,000 less the savings, which brings it to 1,275,562. And the municipal contribution would be exactly what it is in option five, which is To be clear, that is a large amount less than the grant that we offered the cities at 50%, much less than the 50%, almost half of that amount. So that would be, I think this was, I think Commissioner Goodson was talking about something along these lines at a former one to get the cities paid in. And to be very clear, I think it would only be fair to give the cities this option. So if Melbourne Beach, I hear, didn't want to participate, they wouldn't, and the other two cities wouldn't have to be, you know, detrimented because one city didn't want to pay that portion. So that would be, that would be a motion that I could deal with, would give us the $3.7 million. We would not have to dip into marketing.
Well, let me share with you my comments in regards to that. If we do that, we're going to be right back where we were before with the cities saying no, and here we go. They're not going to do it, I guarantee you. I've already talked to these people, till I'm blue in the face in regards to it, they can't afford it, and here we go, right back to where we are. So we could go through that process again, but it isn't going to work. I've told you guys that the first time, you're not listening to me. I've talked to these cities till I'm blue in the face, and it's not because of anything other than they can't afford it. They can't afford it. And if they can't afford it, who the hell's going to pay for it? I just, yeah, go ahead, please.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Can I clarify? The 525, 444, that's what is out of bounds for the cities in option five? Is that where we are?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Okay, so just from your conversations with the municipalities, what is the number? 151, 457, is that?
183 is what I was just told, that they're up, their upkick was what, be the number, 183, if they paid.
Would you ask, I understood 151, I did not understand 183.
82,000 from Cocoa Beach, because theirs would be higher, he said. No, I'm sorry, that was wrong.
Okay.
86. I'm sorry, I got it over there. 86, 60, and 41 is what I think that we had. 268. Ooh, that is more, hold on. No, I added in your payback first, Chair. I'm sorry, Commissioner Felton.
All right.
Question? Question?
Yes, sir.
You know, you can talk all you want about blowing whistles for sharks, and we promote people to come here. People are going to come to Florida regardless whether sharks or whistles. But at the same token, you have a responsibility, Chair, to protect and govern the county with their money. You know, now, the city, the cities can choose what they wish to do with their budget, and I don't have a problem. But at the same token, sometimes you make decisions that affect you, that affect you for a long period of life. Now, granted, you're going to go back to the same thing, ever how we vote tonight, next year, with the same complaint. Now, right now, do we have two motions on the floor, or one, Chair?
We have everything on hold right, I'm sorry, are you trying to...
No, that's fine. We have everything on...
Okay, how about Tobias, is this on hold? Okay, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
Just real quick, you know, I've said...
Thank you.
Sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Chair, I've made this same comment before when we've had this discussion, and you know, I worked for a hotel for a long time. There's nothing to say that tourism is going to be great next year. We've been here before in Brevard County, and travel has stopped immediately. So whatever we do here today, I think is, we should just be mindful of the fact that that's going to get us through the situation today. There's just no guarantee that we'll be able to do that again next year. And so I think we'll have to continue to work on it. But I like the direction we're going, where we can get the county general fund component down, so I think we're heading the right place.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, can I ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Felton, what was the county general fund that you're comfortable with on the budget, sir?
Well, I think in five, that looks, that looks the best, and so, but we have this issue where the cities, we can't get there with their municipal component. So I like the amount that Commissioner Tobias had for tourism. And so I think that gets county general fund down a bit, and also the municipality's contribution. So maybe he could restate that for us with the updated municipal amount.
Let me just make a comment real fast, because what's going to end up happening is perhaps, we've already heard from Melbourne Beach, they don't want to participate, they want to pay nothing. Now, Indy Atlantic probably would not be able to afford this, and that $525,000 would be taken out of Cocoa Beach. So that's not fair.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, please, let me, help me understand, because I'm not getting it.
Can I rank first?
Let me add something, if I may, to help the board a little. Under the historical, the three cities would be paying, Cocoa Beach would be paying 86,000. Of the 525,000, they'll be paying approximately 350,000, right? Yeah. The Indy Atlantic would, was historically paying 44. They, Indy Atlantic had a, went to a full-time tower, we added a full-time tower. So their cost would have gone from 44 to 125 under option five. And then Melbourne Beach would have been 22,000, and they would go to 50,000, approximately 50,000. So that's what the increases would be, the difference between the historical amount and the amount that's under the proposal that the board's discussing. I just want to make sure you all had that information, that it would be helpful to you.
County manager, and option one, though, when you have the 151, 457, is that Cocoa Beach at 46, and Indy Atlantic, it's how much?
No, no, that's Cocoa Beach at 86.
Okay, 86, I'm sorry.
Indy Atlantic at 44, and Melbourne Beach at approximately 22,000.
Okay. So a quick question, sir, if we do this, and so I heard very clearly Melbourne Beach didn't want to pay, so we wouldn't be able to collect from them?
Well, if, you know, we'd be following the board's direction, but obviously, if they weren't paying, then they wouldn't have lifeguard services, they wouldn't pay, but we wouldn't have any corresponding cost under either tourism or the board.
Because I know Satellite Beach, a while ago, hysterically wanted to do the same thing, so they're not in any of this either, we don't...
Right, they're not, yeah, they're not.
That was a long time ago.
They haven't been participating since, I believe, before 2018.
So I think what we're trying to get to tonight is some type of dollar number to move forward with for our budget buddy over there, so that we can figure out how to allocate these funds right now. So I don't think the cities are going to get there. Do I think they should pay a little bit more than in the past I do? Because we all got to come together. And let me tell you a couple things on this, and I don't want to beat y'all up, and I do know you have smaller residents, but if I asked you honestly, you would tell me you still want tourism. So I don't, if you don't, we can make sure TD, and I'm not trying to be mean, we could make sure we don't advertise those areas anymore, it's possible. But that's something that you guys are going to have to work through in the future with that. But there's a lot of money that comes in the tourism dollars. I'm telling you right now, if I could get all this up in District One, get the tourists, I would take it just like that. We don't have beaches up there that we have to do this on, so let me tell you, my residents are all having to pay for your lifeguards, and you say, we go there, well, no, we have a great beach, we have to pay 10 bucks every time we go to the beach, go out there, all of their citizens and the tourists, too. So that's, that's what we have up in District One. So I'm trying to hear you with this, and again, I don't know where the rest of the commission's going to land on this, but a couple of outside-of-the-box things is, and I've never had the support on it before, but I would be glad for Brevard to just take the beaches back and to figure out how to allocate this, because the COVID time really gave me a lot of heartburn. But those are just some things, and Commission, I don't know where you want to go with it. I do think the tourism tax dollars should probably pick up a little bit more of it. I actually think probably the Airbnbs and the hotels should have an extra surcharge that pays for lifeguards if it's, you know, the tourists coming in, but I don't know how to get there. I'm sorry, I'm an accountant, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know how to get to those places. But that's, that's my thoughts on it. But I don't want people drowning, and I hope you guys are in that place, too, and everybody just comes up and just kind of tightens their belt and does it. I'm willing to adapt from District One, too, as far as allocating these funds. So, Commission, I don't know where you're going to land at, but I don't mind us going ahead and doing 1,941, as we had originally planned, take the rest out of the tourist TDC what we can, and then having the cities jump in with what they promised to do with a little extra. But again, I think if a whole city decides not to participate, then they're going to have to figure out how to protect their citizens and stuff. That's just my thought on it. So I'm done, sir.
Well, I'd like to have a motion from somebody.
Well, I think you have two competing motions.
Well, the motion that I have, I'll put one more time, that I moved to approve option one. Is there a second?
I am going to second that, sir, but I want to renegotiate one of the funds in there. You have municipality of 151, but Cocoa Beach just said that they would back the 82,000 that they still had, so we would do that, and then alleviate that off of either the TDT or the general fund for the county amount.
Okay, so that means that you really would have to pay 160,000 roughly in the beginning. So that helps there a little bit.
A question to clarify. The 1,950, where, what silos does that come out of in tourism?
I don't know, that's what you guys, if that's what you want, oh, with you?
No, no, go ahead.
I have just, I know the cultural is very important to Commissioner Goodson, so I don't want to mess with that. So I know these are extra funds, so I'm fine with that, capital. And you're telling me these are all extra amounts, Mr. Krannis, correct?
The 550,000 out of cultural, the 710 out of capital, those are extra funds, yes, ma'am?
Okay, and this is just a one-year budget. So I'm thinking the delta in that number, then, if we did this, it brings it down 80,000 either, we already got the general fund down, so we could take that 80,000. What we could do is we could do the 1,941 out of general, we could do the city portion with that extra amount, is 2,3, 3, 4, 5, 7, and then just have the tourism pick up the rest, because that would alleviate, I think, almost $400,000 from there, from the TDT jumping in. So just a thought. Actually, it's less than what we have in option five.
Commissioner Felton?
I'm sorry, would you say that one more time, Commissioner, those numbers, just...
Yeah, let's talk about those numbers one more time. Are you talking about 1,950,000 or from the county general fund? What are you talking about from the general fund on option one?
County general fund, 1,94168, which we already had put into our budget. And then the cities would be the 151, 457, plus the 82,000.
Which would be 230,000 roughly.
I have that amount at 234,614. That's based on what Cocoa Beach's share would be in the current year.
Okay. You got that, Rob?
Okay. And then the delta from that, what's the math on that for TDT?
The delta that tourism would pay would be 1,566,393.
So that's even less than option five for TDT, so...
Well, that's palatable to me, and I think it's palatable to the cities, and I'm just trying to, and Commissioner Goodson, I'm not trying to be mean or anything like that, but I do think about the county on a daily basis, and I also think about all the lawsuits that could come out of these things when we don't provide lifeguards on the beach. So please don't think that I'm not thinking about our county. I am, I'm thinking about our county very much, and...
Question, Chair.
Sure, ask her.
Let me ask the attorney. If you had no lifeguards, and somebody drowned, would there be, could there be a lawsuit?
There could always be a lawsuit, we're largely immune from liability, we'd probably have less risk, honestly, if we were to put no lifeguards than putting lifeguards on the beach in terms of liabilities, but that shouldn't guide the discussion.
Let me answer, Commissioner Goodson, there may not be a lawsuit, but I'll tell you one thing, your tourism is going to drop like hell, and it will continue to drop. So, you know what, why don't we just get rid of TDC altogether? I mean, are you kidding me?
Well, I don't think anybody knows that can predict tourism as well as we all might think we can.
No, we can't, but...
As you say it, I think the shark issue would be something, blowing a whistle at a shark, that would be interesting. That's going to tear him pretty quick.
These are all realistic, factual numbers. All you have to do is go to Google, and you'll see what's going on right here on our beaches with tremendous amount of shark bites, actually, New Smyrna is the biggest one, but we got problems out there if we don't have people on the beaches taking care of our tourists, taking care of our citizens, we get problems. But that's just my thing. And listen, Commissioner Goodson, I love you, I think you're great.
Well, tell me, how many shark bites were there last year? I don't know.
26.
Whoa. Was that counting New Smyrna, or is that just...
No, that's just in Brevard County.
And you Google that?
I did.
Okay. Some mean sharks.
Lifeguards, there's over 350 pullouts. Drownings, 14.
Hmm, okay.
Could I suggest something here, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm hearing over here to my left that, you know, you don't, you don't want to take anything out of the cultural silo. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. For the tourism component, 1.566,393, we could effectively, half of that could come from what is currently in that capital. And I'd be more comfortable with that, because, again, there's nothing to say that tourism will be wonderful next year, and you ought to leave some, I think, some marketing ability there. So that's, that's where I would be.
Can you strike your numbers off the...
Okay, if you would be kind enough to read those numbers in, and that would be, this would be considered option one, but with different numbers.
Okay. For what Commissioner Pritchett read before, the 1,566,393, I'm suggesting that be comprised of the 710,000 that's in capital. And then the balance would, I guess, come from the marketing portion. Could we do that?
Yeah, I think even dealing with what Mr. Goodson wants to do, am I correct on this, County Manager, that 550 is what's actually extra after we do the Brevard Culture Alliance and all the cultural? No?
The 550 is what is currently available after the votes the board took at the last meeting, in the cultural fund.
We didn't complete it, okay, okay. Okay.
No, that was left over in the cultural money.
Okay. Okay, I'm good with what you guys want to do, divide it. I just want to be honorable to Commissioner Goodson, because we traded collateral a long time ago over that, so.
If I could, I just did some quick math here. So what I'm saying is 710,000 from what is currently here on our sheet that says capital,
Okay.
from marketing, right? And then your county component there, 1.9, or 1,941,068. And then you have the city at what Jill said, 234,000 approximately.
I love it.
Can we do that?
You guys good with that?
This is the first of that this year.
This one-year budget.
This year.
Well, you guys will discuss that with the next county commission. Let's get by this one first. Any more discussion?
Now, which motion are we on?
We are on, we are on the loca motion.
They're modified.
No, we're on, we're on the modified motion of Option One, and Commissioner Felton just put in the numbers that are new. So Commissioner Felton, please, if you would do this one more time so that Kim and Donna can get it down for our record.
Okay, for excellent clerk to the board ladies there tonight, 710,000 from the capital, what's on our sheet here for capital, 856,393 will come from the marketing. And then county general fund component, 1,941,068. And I'll have to get Jill to give me the last part, 234.
That was the 234,614 would be the municipal contribution.
23416, is that correct, Jill?
234,614.
Okay, ladies, do you have all that stuff?
I have a just question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Goodson?
Do you want to do the same thing to Commissioner Tobias' proposal, so we can see numbers against numbers? Or not?
No, I don't, because those numbers don't work as far as the city numbers go.
I do, I do though.
Okay.
So I want to see the numbers that Tobias proposed.
Right when you do though, can we make a motion a second, and then we can't do that?
There's already a motion in a second on the floor to accept Option One.
Yeah, there's all kinds of motions running around.
I got you.
Hold on, hold on, if I'm out of order here, let me know. But if I'm not mistaken, we have a motion on the floor for Option One with the modified numbers that Commissioner Felton just put into the budget. That's where we are on this motion. So for discussion purposes, I believe Commissioner Goodson would like to see what Commissioner Tobias would have, and Commissioner Tobias, if you would probably, if you would go through what?
Yeah, I, Mr. Chair, I don't, I think, I think you have a coalition of three here. I don't, I do have one, I do have one question, though, to Mr. Kranis. You know, I find it a little disturbing, from my perspective here, as someone that was, over the tenure of my eight years here, fighting hard against the TDC, and now I'm on the exact opposite side of this, so.
That's called policy.
Oh my, neither I'm going crazy or someone else is. So this is about a million dollars less in, a million dollars less in marketing. I don't know how we have a rubric for, for marketing, how we spend, but we do spend about 13 million. So if you're going to see a loss of seven or eight percent of marketing dollars, and assuming marketing works, because we're expecting, you know, how many less tourists? You've got to have a dollar figure per night in beds in order to judge how well, you know, marketing is going on these type of things. If we don't, then why are we spending anything in marketing, is my question?
Sir, I'm not sure I have your question exactly. Are you asking me, how much do I, how much do I predict will, our tourism will decline as a result of a budget cut? Is that?
Not a budget cut, because it's still in marketing, so to be very clear, but it won't be marketing that is billboards, or YouTube, or however you do, or contract out to be marketing. But it's a million dollars that'll go to lifeguards as opposed to those other. How many less, how many less heads in beds do you expect? And if you don't have an answer, and you don't trace these things, why are we spending any money in marketing?
All right, that's...
Well, can I say something to?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Felton, please.
I kind of wanted to get an answer here. If we're going to, we're cutting the marketing budget like seven or eight percent, so this is a huge, 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 do we expect seven or eight percent less tourists? Do we expect three percent less tourists? I know there are market trends here working that you have to layer on top of all this stuff, but you have the benefit of...
The issue about whether we should have lifeguards or not, it plays into the facts. I mean, if Commissioner Steele's premise is right, if we don't have lifeguards and we have an incident, that could, that could certainly reduce the number of tourists potentially. So, you know, having a million dollars in, in lifeguards could preserve our predictions for next year. So I would say it's, you know, while it's a very difficult metric, I don't know that I could say for sure that we will have a reduction, because the, having lifeguards could actually, you know, prevent us from, from having losses in the future. So, you know, I think it's hedging your bets, basically.
Yes, Commissioner Felton?
Just back to the lifeguard discussion, I think we all understood, understood before that lifeguards work, right? We, that they were, it was effective on, on the beaches that we had coverage.
Absolutely.
So, and also, I'd say on the, on the money component here, I think the board was headed in the direction of taking it solely from marketing, so what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to do here is simply split it, and I, I think that's a reasonable compromise.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
That's all right. County Manager, let me, let me help wrap my head around this. So the cultural 550, that doesn't count the, all the grants we just approved, correct?
Right.
Everything except that, everything?
After the grants, there's still 550.
Okay, but, so we did not fund the Cultural Alliance 202,000, correct?
No, we didn't.
So, we did?
We did not.
We did not.
I'm sorry, I missed what you're talking, you mean funded in this, in this motion?
For fiscal year 2425, there is no contract in place, nor is there funding identified for such a contract.
So what we could do is maybe take 250,000 of these cultural funds to hold it aside for that, and we can go ahead and apply 300 of this towards it as well.
Yeah, I agree. I'm voting for this thing, I wish we'd hurry up.
Me too.
I just don't know what amendment we're on.
I'll do that.
Commissioner Felton, if you want to revisit that with your motion.
Okay, so...
Oh, Jesus.
Okay, okay. So we will then...
Going back, Kim and Donna.
So we'll put basically 300 back into the marketing, and move it from the cultural. Does that, does that sound, does that sound right?
I think she wants you to read it.
300,000.
So, from the tourism, then, I think I said before, 710, and then the 856 out of the marketing, and we're going to put 300, right? So that's going to make that 556393. So...
Kim, you want to read us back what we have, so that Commissioner Felton can check his numbers? Is that what you want to do?
That's fine.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
710,000 for capital, 556,393 for marketing, 1,941,68 from general fund, 234,14 for municipalities, and 300,000 for cultural.
That's good.
I second it.
That's my motion.
Motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Is there any more discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying, oh, did you have more discussion?
I just want to, just for the future commission here, if they're watching, this is so, this is so difficult, this is absolutely, this board voted five-nothing to ask the cities to pay 50%. If this motion goes through, and I know this motion will...
That's not what this board did. They, we, that, this board did not vote that. We voted to send the county, the county, the county manager and Morris to, in fact, try to, to recommend it to them. We did not vote that way. That's absolutely not true.
Okay, sure. My motion asks the cities to contribute less than one-third the cost. And, and here, we're going to settle on a little more than nine percent. It is very, very difficult. It is very difficult for, we all observe sunshine up here. I would ask future commissioners, you just got to, you just got to stick, when you, when you make an offer up here, you got to stick with what you say, come hell or high water. It makes it not only difficult on the other commissioners up here, but it makes it extremely difficult on staff. And I appreciate the cities showing up, but the cities, I think, I think their budget, when they come to ask for money out of our budget, it, it's very important, we look at that. There are, there are decisions that the cities made that they're not willing to cut, that this board has made cuts on. We cut, we got rid of our golf courses, and you just heard the city of Cocoa Beach is not willing to do that. So the fact that they say they can't afford that, they can. And the reason they can is because we're going to end up paying 90% of the, if this, when this motion does go through, all I just, all I just ask is that we, and I know I'm going down four to one on this one, that we, you know, it's just, it's just, it's just disgusting on this one, in my, in my opinion. And it's got nothing, absolutely nothing to do with safety. It's just, this board has made tough decisions up here that we've heard for constituents that didn't make us very, that didn't make us happy, or didn't make our constituents happy, and those elected officials haven't made those decisions, and they haven't had to make those decisions because we're backfilling, not, not, again, 90% of the lifeguard services we will be, we will be covering when this motion goes through. And it may be 89, depending on whether or not that 80,000, and you just heard Cocoa Beach up here say, all they can afford is 80,000, then all of a sudden, it's now 160,000. Maybe they should stay...
They're paying the money they didn't pay last year.
Anyway, sorry, sorry, I should have just kept quiet. Thank you for giving me the time, Mr. Chair. Good, good with the tenacity on this one.
Commissioner Tobias, I think each and every one of us appreciate whatever you do on this commission. I'm sorry that, you know, you do a great job, and I think everybody understands it, and we appreciate that. Any more discussion?
I do want to make a motion, a discussion after, I just want to say, cities, if you would, just try to figure out a way to help raise some revenue with it a little, maybe figure out what you could do with maximizing your fees, and just help with this. It's going to go up again. I will not be here, so just, just maybe think through that, because I know none of us want anybody not to live, and I, I know you guys want tourism. I know what it does for your restaurants, and so I'm an accountant, I know better, so.
No more discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, three to two. Thank you very much. Pardon me?
Who voted no?
Commissioner Goodson didn't. That's okay, that's his opinion.
You kept saying you wanted to put on this.
That's all right. Let's take a break. Thank you very much, 10-minute break. Thank you, thank you very much.
Commissioner Goodson, you kept saying down there.
I know, but it's politics. Hey, also, I look...
Hey, also, I look-